Good, let's start. Alright, ready? Welcome, coming soon. Alright, well, uh, welcome to everyone to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals. For tonight, Wednesday, January, it's twenty seven, two thousand twenty one, it is six thirty P M. And apparently we're on Zoom meeting, meeting ID eight six four eight 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 six seven two seven. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, we'll make a roll call, if you could start, Jim.
Here, Jim Akabachi.
Yeah, Richard Sample.
Here, Chris Conti.
Here, Jacob Morrison.
And Nazia Kalasi. Alright, we're gonna start with the, with some minutes for October fourteen, two thousand twenty.
Okay, regarding the minutes, I did get a copy of them from Sonia earlier today, and I did read them end to end. Other than, other than two words joining together in, in the front page, I find no problem with them, I move to accept as presented.
Yeah, I saw that you get the, uh, minor modification, right? That word, I noticed that. The first page.
You read it too, see?
Yeah, I did, actually. Alright, so do I have a seconds on the minutes?
Thank you, Richard Sample.
Okay, second, Richard, all in favor, say hi.
Hi, Chris Conti.
Akabachi, aye.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Sample, aye.
Alright, and Nazia Kalasi, aye. Uh, we have a, a special permit extension, I'm gonna accuse myself because I'm a G C on that job. Eight dash nineteen, Jimmy, you have the minutes?
I have the minutes. I also see that we've received a request for an extension. Um, apparently because of COVID and other reasons, um, beyond the contractor's control, they haven't started this project and they'd just like to extend it. Um, I don't see any problem with extending it, especially out of the existing circumstances, any board members, have any comment? Hearing none, I would, I would like somebody just to make a motion to ex, to.
I, I have a comment, um, Mr. Chair, um, I was wondering about the, the building permit, I noticed, I looked it up. And it's active, but it says it's expired, it expired July thirtieth, twenty twenty, does that have any meaning on this, or?
I don't know, but I, I would assume that it couldn't be renewed unless we extend this special permit. That could be why this is being requested.
Also, there was a W P A Form five that I looked on the, uh, building permit, and that was dated two thousand twelve. And that seemed outdated, and along with, uh, certificate of liability and constructor supervisor license, so. I guess I would, uh, prove this with conditions that that gets all updated.
Okay.
If I, if I may, Jimmy.
Go ahead.
I gotta let, uh, Brian Grady, he represents the owner and the G C. I don't, I don't wanna interfere.
I see Brian's here, I, I see his microphones available.
But he needs, he's mute, he needs to be unmuted, he was asking me, I, I, Brian, you gotta push the mute button, not the host.
Sonia, can you grant Brian the ability to speak?
I see Veronica's joined also.
There she is, I don't see. Ronca, you here?
Yeah, she's muted too.
Let me double check, Brian G, I'm assuming?
Yeah, we're not seeing, we're not seeing a microphone on or off, there's no microphone, it's almost as if he doesn't have one available to him.
Yeah, there's no option.
Okay. Uh, uh, maybe Brian, uh, maybe you should.
He doesn't have a microphone on the machine he's on.
Right, or you have to log out, then lock back in.
Well, let's table this and move forward, is that okay with you, Mr. Kalasi?
I'm, I'm fine, I, I mean, that's up to you guys, don't matter, I mean.
Brian needs a few minutes to get a different machine or something, what, what, you know?
Alright, let's, let's table a few minutes until Brian can get back, well, we have Veronica Devenese, and it's six thirty three P M. Alright, so we're gonna start with public hearing thirty eight dash twenty. Jeff, Jeffrey Gilani, and that's eighty one Paper Mill Road.
Yes, sir. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, okay, we're gonna, you gotta hold on, we gotta read the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Sonia, are you reading it?
No, I'm gonna read it for her, for, for Ken, it's in front of me.
Okay, go ahead, uh.
I just wanna make sure, okay. The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on January twenty seventh, two thousand twenty one, at six thirty P M, to consider petition number thirty eight dash twenty for a variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table six twenty five of the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Jeffrey, Jeffrey Gilani, eighty one Paper Mill Road, Wareham, Mass. Zero two five seven six. Proposing to construct a new detached accessory structure located at eighty one Paper Mill Road, Wareham, Mass, that appears on assessors map ninety seven lot one oh three seven dash A in the M R thirty zoning district.
Alright, uh, Mr. uh, Gilani, wanna tell us what are you doing there, and what's the plan?
Okay, I am the owner, and this is my primary residence, I submitted an applicant, everybody can still hear me, right?
Yeah.
I submitted an application for a sixty by one twenty accessory garage, um, uh, and, and it cleared all the setbacks, area, conservation, everything came back, um, fine, except for a height, a, a, a height issue, okay? And I, I, I missed that, but I, I have, uh, I have some internal and external needs, aesthetic and functional. And I think I got a little bit of a uniqueness thing we can talk about, but generally speaking, in terms of, of needs, um, I mean, how do we, I wanna share a screen here with you guys.
The bottom of your screen, there should be a little icon, if you move your mouse to the bottom of your screen, it'll say share screen, you click on that.
Do you see that?
We can see it fine.
Alright, so I just wanted to show you what we're dealing with, so, uh, sixty foot, and I'll show you the official drawing, this is mine, and, and I'll show you the, but this is, makes it a little clearer. So that yellow line is the twenty foot, uh, limit on accessory buildings, okay? Uh, internally, I, I have some needs, you know, in terms of the uniqueness of the lot, I, not very many lots on this road allow such a big building. And even furthermore, not, even fewer lots allow me to put it so far back as I am. Now, I wanna show you later that I've made some good faith efforts on my own, nobody's asked me to put this thing as far back as possible, and I even spent the last eight months buying some extra property and doing that, I'll show you the plan for that. Um, and I have my, my two closest neighbors, the only two people that could actually see this from their house without looking through, you know, the woods, uh, there are attached letters, and they're both on board with this. In fact, one of them is the one that sold me an extra forty two hundred square feet in order to move this, so right now, just to get a feel for this, as you see this, um, I, I've got some internal needs, but in terms of the uniqueness, you can't, you're not gonna put a sixty by one twenty building up and have a twelve foot high wall, you're gonna have a fourteen or sixteen foot wall, and what that does with the twenty foot is it slams that peak down. And in, in terms of the aesthetic, the irony of this, of me being here, is I believe the twenty foot limit is somewhat of a residential aesthetic. But the irony is, you know, the uniqueness of the lot allows me to put this up, it, it needs a fourteen or a sixteen foot wall, but that twenty foot slams that peak down, and it makes it look like a, an industrial building, which is one of the, absolutely one of the things I'm trying to avoid here, so I couldn't get away with this sixty foot beam. And, and I, even a two twelve pitch would be above twenty. All I'm asking for is six, and as you can see, looking here, it's sixty percent of the roof pierces that twenty feet, it's not the whole building. Um, and it's really that peak where I can get extra ventilation, I can put a, a mezzanine down the center of this if I need to in the future. Um, I wanna do certain lighting and, and ventilation. Externally, the two things I'm after is I do not want, remember that January we had in two thousand fifteen where we had four snowstorms with no melting in between? And I do not want a low pitch roof, that, this is a sixty foot clear span, I know it'll be engineered to what Dave Requena wants in the code, but I don't want five feet of snow on a sixty foot span on a two twelve or a one twelve or a zero pitch, so I'm after that. But also, the irony is aesthetically, if you guys allow that six feet, uh, and I'm gonna show you how this fits into the lot, and I'm gonna put arborvitae in front of it and everything. If you allow me that six feet, that really helps this look like a residential, it's not higher than a typical colonial. Typical colonial's around twenty six, twenty eight feet, if it's got like a twenty four foot beam. So it fits into a residential height, not for an accessory building, but a residential height, and I'm trying to get a peak that not only allows the snow, gives me my internal needs, but gives it a, a little bit of a residential feel, nothing I hate more than driving down the road and, and, and seeing a one twelve, two twelve pitch in somebody's yard, so, um, let me share another, so, and while we're at it, let me just look at this, I'll show you this, this is what I.
Can I like interrupt you while you're speaking?
Yes, sir.
You keep preferring to make it look residential, what, what's the purpose of it?
My, my, well, personally, my sense of aesthetics, what's the purpose of the building, you mean?
Yeah.
It's a garage, I've got some collector cars, I've got, you know, woodworking stuff and whatever, is no business whatsoever, there'll be no parking. Uh, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to put this thing back as far as possible. So, I mean, we're in a, it's M R thirty, but it's residential, and I want, I, I've made some good faith efforts on my own without anybody asking over the past eight to twelve months to delay this project, and if you look at the drawing, uh, that white dotted la, uh, box is where the building was, and it was, uh, Brian Grady, who may or may not be with us, drew up the plan, I'll show you the plan a year ago, and that's when I decided, I, I just, it, it was clear to go, except for the height, of course. And I said, I, I really wanna pursue burying this way back, so there's not a lot of lots where you can do this. Right now, I know the front of the lot's fifteen feet off the pavement, so from the aesthetic point of view, I went from a hundred and about eighteen feet from the pavement of the road, now I'm at a hundred and sixty five feet. So I'm really ma, really made an effort, and I've got this all approved, let me, uh, unshare that and share with you, uh, this. Um, this here, this is where I was a year ago, that was my lot. Okay, and you can see I'm a hundred and four feet from the front, that's a, that's about a hundred and eighteen from the actual pavement of the road. And I, I spent the last year doing this, so I'm just trying to demonstrate, I'm making a good faith, there's other things going on here, I'm trying to make a really aesthetic, trying to clean up the town map too, because this, you see this, this, uh, this map, this lot A three, and there's another piece, is these, is these remnants around me that I, I, I'm trying to acquire and erase, you know, and, and sort of just give myself the buffer. They're no good to anybody else, but I just wanna include them, so I've got a project going on, on here where aesthetics is actually at the top of my list, I've got functional requirements as well, but I, I really have made an effort to bury this thing back there, I mean, I'm gonna bury it even further with some tall arborvitae. And I, in, in addition to my functional things, I really, I really would like to have that, the aesthetic of that pitch on the outside, and I think, you know, my two closest neighbors are on board, they're very laid back about it, and unless there's, has somebody else that has chimed in today, um, you know, I haven't, I haven't run into anybody that, that doesn't agree that aesthetically that looks a lot better than having a sixteen high foot wall with a, you know, one and a half twelve pitch or something like that, just in order to keep below the, um, the, uh, the ordinance. So again, it's, the uniqueness is I'm allowed to put up a really big, pretty sizable building, but I, you know, I think vertically it needs a little bit room to breathe aesthetically and functionally. Let me go back and just get back to, um, where the heck is it here? I just wanted to go back to auto count here for you, is, so, so you can see, if you've got two attached letters, the house across the street from me, that's Bernadine Gomes, she's on board, and the duplex next to me, below, on, below, you know, on the bottom of the screen with the white truck, that's Pasquale Resio, he's on board, he owns that whole duplex. And, uh, Christine Rooney up top here can barely see me, and to be honest, I've been here sixteen years and I've never met her, so. Um, but she, there's a lot of woods between us, so I didn't, I didn't seek to get a letter from her. Um, but you guys did in fact send her a letter, so that's what it looks like now, the yellow box is where I've moved it. Uh, if, just for, just for your information, these two slivers up top are, are, are part of the town map that I'm trying to clean up, I wanna acquire those and, and, and just, you know, my property used to actually have this lower sliver up until nineteen sixty five, and I wanna get that back, but that has nothing to do with this, so. Uh, again, if you wanted to get a feel for, for what this looks like from the street, that yellow line is the twenty feet limit. And I don't wanna do this, but I, uh, if you guys were on the edge, I did a little bit, you know, if I brought the wall down to fourteen feet and kept the four twelve pitch, uh, only forty percent of the roof would pierce the twenty feet, and it would look like that. It gets, it, things get a little bit squatty functionally and aesthetically there. So I, I, I would really, I would really would want that six foot variance, but, um, as a final comment, you know, it's not six foot on the whole, it's not six foot on the entire footprint, and on what doesn't pierce, I'm actually below, so whether or not that matters to you or not, I just thought I'd point that out. That's basically it.
Alright, very well, uh, Chris Conti was sit on the chair for this hearing, I wanna start with Chris, what do you think, Chris? Take your mute, okay.
Okay, um, so, uh, I don't know, he, he offered the, the lower height, um, so I don't know, I may tend to, to wanna go with that, but I wanna sit here if any, any of the neighbors or anybody here is against it, also.
We'll, we'll get to that, Veronica, what do you think? Veronica. Okay, Jim, after Veronica's there.
Um, I have a couple of questions for the applicant. First, first one, um, would be, I guess you have a car collection and, and it's a hobby shop, how would you feel about a deed restriction that this structure never be used for any commercial purpose, even if it's an in-home business?
Um, I, I, I would like to see the details of that, I'm not against something like that, um.
Okay, that's my first question, my second question is, you said there's a functional, um, reason that you'd like that six feet, what are you, what are you gonna be doing in there, you need so much height?
Uh, so lighting arrangements, um, ventilation, I've talked to my, you know, supplier and, and having that up high, I am surrounded by trees. Um, I would like the option of, of a, of a center run, uh, freestanding mezzanine, um, that's not part of the original plan, but something down the middle. Um, and.
A storage or something like, you're saying?
No, yes, but just a freestanding mezzanine, nothing that was structurally, has anything to do with the building.
I got you, I got you, collect cars, you wanna throw a fender or a door?
Well, to be, to be honest too, I, I wanna hang banners up there too, uh, and, and have them be above the working height of any sort of lift I might put in there, or, or whatever I might do in there. Uh, I, I, I've got a lot of collectibles and valuable things that are gonna end up out of the house and in here as well, and having an ability to spread them out and display them is part of what I want, yes.
And I don't have a problem with, what, what do you end up with for a pitch instead, at, at six feet, what do you gotta sit, a five pitch, a four pitch?
On, on this, what you're looking at right here is a four twelve pitch.
A four twelve, so it's a, still a fairly shallow pitch.
It's, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to keep it's, you know, but.
And on the fourteen footer, on the fourteen footer, what's the pitch?
I, I still have the four twelve, and it brings the height from twenty six down to the twenty four, as I said, I did that, cause.
I don't understand four twelve, if you drop it, you, you've gotta be changing.
I'm try, I'm changing the sidewall height.
Oh, you're dropping the sidewall as well, forget that.
No, no, just the sidewall, cause I, if I go to three twelve, I don't think snow runs off.
No, I agree, I agree, I'd rather.
So I said, well, you know, a building this big, you can't, you can't build a ten or twelve foot sidewall, you can do a fourteen, I'd like to have the sixteen. Um, but a fourteen or a sixteen, so I did the two drawings, you end up at twenty four feet or twenty six feet, I'd like to do the twenty six. But if you guys are absolutely against it, you know, I can offer that, otherwise, I, I, you know, obviously have to do something different.
The request is first, is, is for a variance of six feet in height?
Yes, it is, and that's, that's like I said, that's what it looks like.
That's, that's the end of my questions.
Uh, Veronica, you back in?
Uh, I am.
What do you think?
Um, I, I think it's pretty large, um, considering it's a residential lot, and, um.
You mean you're talking about the height, is a lot, I mean, the, the.
No, no, but the footprint of the.
We're not here for that.
Yeah, that's approved, that's already approved. But it's, you know, as far as Dave Requena sent back the application, I already had gone through this, I missed the height, but I want it. Um, it's approved, I, I'm under twenty five percent of, of coverage, I'm, I'm, all my offsets are fine, conservation doesn't have a problem with it. It got all the way to the end, and it's only a height variance.
Um, I, I, I'm not, um, I know it's just the height variance, but I think the restriction on the height is with the intent to prevent a very large building going in.
Um, well, I, I have to disagree, cause I can do a flat top building, this, I can do this whole building flat top, I'm trying to keep this from looking like that, I don't wanna, I don't want an industrial looking building. I can take that pitch down and, and make it twenty feet higher, I can take the sidewall, that's sixteen feet, and bring that up to twenty, and go with a flat beam across, and, and, and I meet all the requirements, but that looks like I'm on Route twenty eight. And I personally don't like that, none of my neighbors have complained about this, I'm trying to make this look, you know, if I put some white trim board on this, and I have some arborvitae, so you see, and through the top of those arborvitae, you're gonna see a, a four twelve pitch, which looks like it belongs in a residence, that's, that's one of my, I have functional requirements, but this is largely aesthetic for me. I'm trying, I'm trying to, trying to make this look right.
Uh, Jake, what do you think?
Um, I think it looks good, I have no problem with this.
Richard, what do you think?
I have, uh, drove by there earlier today, and, uh, you don't have any numbers on your house, and I think you're supposed to have them by code anyway, but, uh.
I'll do that tomorrow.
I, uh, that, that, number one, I mean, sixty by, what is it, a hundred and twenty?
Hundred?
That's a huge building. Um, you say you, you've got antique cars, and then you say woodwork, and now when you do the woodwork, and is it gonna be separated rooms to keep the dust and everything from getting all over your antique cars and your banners and whatnot?
Yeah, but I'm not a woodworker, uh, I'm not a, a cabinet maker, I'm a guy that needs to cut some plywood every now and then, and it's not, you know, so. My antique cars right now are a combination of, you had other people's properties and in storage, which is costing me a ton of money, so. Uh, it'll be a good problem to have getting sawdust on my, on my cars, let's put it that way. But yes, I will, I will be fitting out the building, uh, with, you, you know, there's not gonna be any.
Putting plumbing in there, and what, whatever else?
No, no plumbing, I would like maybe someday to, you know, if, if the town allows maybe a bathroom, but no, no plumbing.
And, uh, okay, so there's no plumbing, and then, you know, you got a lot of snow that's gonna be sitting on that roof, and that's a metal roof, and it's gonna slide right off of there, is there any precautions you have? Or keep anybody from getting avalanched, or anything like that?
That, that is, I, I was hoping, Mr. Requena is gonna, I, I expect some, some, uh, requirements on that, but we never got beyond, uh, this, this height requirement, so I think he's gonna have some drainage and avalanche, uh, requirements for me, and, uh, I'm more than happy to put them in.
There are enough of my questions, but I'm siding with Jim, I'd like to see, uh, some things put aside, make sure that that doesn't become some kind of a, uh, commercial building or something, because that is one massive structure that you're putting in, and like I said, I drove by, and all the houses, even the duplexes, they're not the biggest houses. This thing here makes, you could fit all those on Paper Mill Road right in this building, so. I, I'd like to see some kind of, uh.
Alright, uh, you're good, Richard, for me, I do agree with Veronica, I think that's way too big for the area, and uh, personally, I'm not comfortable with it, uh, I wanna pass it to the public, is there anyone in the public wanna speak in favor of this project? I hear one, none, is there anyone else, anyone wanna speak against this project? Again, I hear none.
You have two letters for it, I just, uh, they're older people, and I didn't even try to get them on Zoom, so.
Okay, do we have, uh?
I did see them, uh, Naz, I, I did read two letters, one is the Abut, or two, I believe it's his north, and one is the directly across the street, and they were both, uh, supporting this project.
The, the one is to the south, I believe, um, the one that sold me the forty two hundred, yeah.
Okay.
So, uh, uh, I, I'm personally not comfortable with it, uh, I wanna re-ask Veronica, because I guess the other three, you're gonna need four out of five, uh, what's she think, again? Veronica?
Yeah, sorry, can't get my mute button off. Um, I don't see, um, a hardship here for a variance, um. So I'd like to hear what the hardship is.
Well, you know, and, and for, for me, it's, it's just some of the functional requirements and desires that I have, and including the snow runoff, and without having to take, uh, the wall down to something like ten feet, which, which you just can't do on a sixty by one twenty. And also, really the aesthetics, you know, I, again, I, I, I don't know what you guys, your opinion is on the twenty foot rule and what that's really about, but I, I, it forces me to a flat top, which is very industrial looking, and, uh, that's kind of the, a little bit of the irony here, I'm trying to avoid that with, and, and, and with bringing the sidewall down, and like I said, you know, I'm willing to go down to fourteen on the sidewall and only ask for four feet above the, um, the, the ordinance, which is the height of a small child, just to give this thing a pitch, so you've got good snow runoff and, uh, good aesthetics in some of my internal requirements.
Alright, uh, okay, uh, but like, I, I have to agree with Veronica said, there's a reason why there's this height restriction. Uh, it's to prevent that, that large size building, which is on the size of the footprint, we have no say, apparently. But I think it's awkward looking over there, it's way too big, see, I could see if it was manucure, uh, manucure, uh, barn, we had one barn that came before us, I think in Little Harbor, but it was only like two thousand square feet, it was beautiful what they did. They needed the height restriction, uh, they needed a variance, which the board agreed to it, because they had like ten acres of a field of water, and that barn was unbelievable, it was only like two thousand square feet. So, what?
Um, excuse me, I just, uh, figured out how to get my mute button working.
What's your name, ma'am?
My name's Nicole.
Nicole, what, and your address?
Um, Thomason, and I'm at eighteen Evergreen Street.
Okay, what do you like to say?
Um, I would just like to say, I'm, um, I, I agree with this project at that height, I do understand what he's saying, that it would look completely industrial if you drop that height at all. Um, if his neighbors are in agreement and stuff, I mean, I, personally, I just wanted to, I just was able to say that now, cause I finally found the mute button, so, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Nicole. Uh, did everybody want to look at the area there, drove by?
I did it on Google.
We Google. Chris, did you go?
I, I did, I didn't go, I, I did it by, by Google also. How many, how many vehicles are gonna go in this barn?
I'm a, I'm a bit of a collector, I mean, I've got the first Monte Carlo ever made, nineteen seventy, VIN number one, but it's a project, I got projects like that, I've got four twenty seven sixty seven Impalas, I got two, a, a three twenty seven.
Ten, twelve, fourteen?
Yeah, something like that, but you know, define a vehicle, some of them are rollers needing a restoration, but it's really just, I, I can't, if I wanna go to a car show, I have to go down, I have to go down across from the Ford dealership and get one of my cars, and, and, and that's getting expensive. I don't even leave, I don't even take a car out unless I'm going to a show, cause it's a, it's an all-day event, I can't just get in a car at my property, so that's part of this, a big part of this, um.
I, I was just trying to justify the size of it.
No, I, I, listen, you know, I'm a, I'm a guy that, that likes to, I'm an engineer, so I like to, you know, have, have some work benches, I'm a, a guy that works on, you know, my own cars. Uh, you know, it's just never run out of room again kind of situation, but, you know, it's not, there's nothing, uh, there's no business or industrial, uh, you know, I, I wanna do some welding and whatnot, so things like that, I, I know, uh, I know that some people don't understand people that collect and that, that have, I've got collectibles, I mean, my, my house is full of stuff that I wouldn't wanna tell you about, you know, and it's gotta get out of here, so this is part of that whole effort, you know, I, I decided to stay here in this town, and, um, you know, I, I, I wanted, you know, I've been, I've actually bought this property uh, in two thousand and four, because it had, you, it had some room back there to do something, you know, and I've been, I've been slowly planning this since then, so. But another thing too is, you know, you, you, you know, if you wanna, you, you'd be surprised how much room you need to put a row of cars on one side of that building. you 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 know, if you want to, you you'd be surprised how much room you need to put a row of cars on one side of that building and be able to, you have to be able to drive through the building to get out two exits, you know, for not getting trapped in there or whatever. You some of, a a a huge amount of that floor space has to be open. You know, I mean, that's just the way it is. If you're gonna put cars in there and have to be able to get any one of them out or worked on or brought to sandblasting or whatever, you you can't fill this building. That's part of the problem too with with this.
Are there any like drain requirements or any of that that uh, Mr. Requena?
Anything, anything Dave Requena tells me to do, I'm gonna do it. So that's, that's, that's all coming from from Dave. And he's gonna, he's gonna be.
Let the zoning officer do his work. I mean, he enforced, can the building code has nothing to do with us. I personally would like, I went there today and looked and looked. I want to, I personally want to continue it for a second hearing. Like, let everybody go look at it again. Digest it more. Uh, you know, I I know it's a hobby, but it becoming a commercial hobby, sandblasting, painting.
I I don't want to make it sound like that, okay?
I under, I totally understand. I I.
Guy. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not looking to buy equipment and do crazy.
I I totally understand, but that's you now. Who knows what's in the future? Uh, personally, I want to continue this. I'm not ready to vote tonight on it. I don't know how you guys feel. So I think we should sleep on it. Personally, I want to continue. I don't, I want to sleep on it, think about it more.
I'm fine with continuing.
Okay, can I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
To continue, we have February ten.
Okay, to February ten.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue by Veronica to February ten. Do I have a second?
I second Chris Conti.
Good. Second by Chris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, Chris Conti.
Hi, Jim Morrison.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Jake.
Hi, Jacob Morrison.
And just Jim said aye and aye Naz, so it continues to February ten. Thank you.
Jeff, could you start sharing your screen?
What's up, buddy?
Uh, Jeff, he's got a screen share up there. He's taking up our screen.
Okay, uh, we're gonna go through thirty nine dash twenty, Josh and Angela Howard for Ten Bog Iron Road.
Do you want to, do we have um, do we have your guy here for your?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, Brian Gray, is that, is Brian in?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Oh, Brian is here, okay. All right.
Yeah, sorry about that. I had a problem on muting uh, earlier. Sorry about that.
Okay, go ahead.
So so we're back at um, eight dash nineteen Laurel Land Trust special permit extension request, eleven Murphy Street. Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, that's correct. Thanks, Jim. Uh, what you stated earlier uh, was correct. There's been some delays on the project uh, due to COVID and uh, the owner of the property was actually having some brief conversations with a conversation, conservation group uh, to see if any, there was any interest in purchasing it. Uh, but that's, that's not going to occur, so he's moving ahead uh, with the construction and the and the permitting and this address number eleven Murphy actually is listed on the town website as the building permit's still being active. Um, the other ones may have been denied, but uh, you have to make application for a building permit to get a denial letter uh, to be able to file with the Board of Appeals, but um, this address eleven Murphy, the building permit is still in an active state.
Okay.
It's an actus, excuse me, this is Chris.
Go ahead, Chris.
Um, so I I do see it's in an active state, but it says it expired July thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty. Al- also on the, on the permit, there's a bunch of different files. There's a WPA Form Five, um, which is um, I guess Conservation, right? Water Protection Act, um, and that seems to be outdated also. That was dated April eleventh, April eighteenth, uh, two thousand and twelve.
No, Conservation's still valid. Uh, Conservation's still valid on the project. The building permit is kind of unrelated to the special permit. Um, once this special permits reauthorized, they will need to reapply uh, and revalidate the permit. Um, so you can't have one without the other.
So before you get the building permit. Any other questions?
Um, what is the special permit for? Did I miss that?
Well, this was issued, it's for, you know, uh, table six thirteen for more than one principal dwelling on a lot. So there are two principal dwellings on this lot, number eleven Murphy and number thirteen Murphy. So the application was made two years ago uh, to divide uh, because a duplex is allowed and zoning does allow you to separate the duplex into two principal buildings on the lot through the special permit process. So that application was made, the special permit was granted. Uh, the lot meets all the requirements. It has the minimum area requirements. It has the minimum frontage requirements. It it meets all of that. Uh, so we uh, went through the special permit process, which was granted uh, because we do meet, uh, comply with all the requirements under the zoning.
Do you have any conservation documents that have been updated besides the one dated two thousand and twelve?
Uh, Conservation is currently valid. It has been extended and extensions have been granted. Uh, I can certainly provide those to the board. I don't have them available in front of me right now.
Well, I I guess I I I'm fine with this. I'd approve it, but I just want all that information updated uh, under, under the files there, under the building permit. I'd like to see an active, I know it's an active permit. I'd like to see an updated uh, date on that. The certificate of liability updated, the construction supervisor license updated and something from conservation. I'd be fine.
That can only be provided, sure.
Before we um, go any further, are there any other board members with questions? Okay, anybody from the public listening in, in either in favor or opposed, please um, be heard. Um, again, here nothing. I'm gonna go back to my board and um, Chris, you seemed pretty um, in depth. Looks like you did a lot of research on this.
Well, I I did look it up and I was looking at all the um, the files that they had and a lot of them just seemed outdated and and it it says it was an active building permit, but it was expired. So it was just, you know, we give a special permit on a, on a, on a building permit that's been expired and it has updated, the the files need to be updated, I think. That's all.
Yeah. Do you, would you like to make a motion?
So I I I uh, moved that we um, grant the two year extension with the conditions that uh, the building permit gets um, I guess, an active date on it, uh, gets reissued, I guess. Um, the and the construction supervisor less uh, license gets updated. I I know he already updated it and certificate of liability and something from a note from conservation.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second Veronica Debonis.
Okay, so we have a motion from Chris Conti and we have a second from Veronica Debonis. Um, as the motion has stated, Sonya, I hope you can make sense of it and type it up for us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, Chris Conti.
Good, Jake.
Hi, Jacob Morrison. I'm gonna go last for now on.
Okay.
Hi, Richard Simple.
Richard says, okay, Veronica.
Uh, yeah, I second.
Oh, you seconded it, but and you're and you're second and you're aye and you're second and I'm saying aye. I think we're all set. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Now we can move over to thirty nine twenty and Naz, you'll take the microphone.
All right, very good. Thirty nine dash twenty and it is uh, Josh and Angela Howard and that's Ten Bog Iron Road. Want to read it, Jim?
The zoning Board of Appeals will hold an online public hearing on January twenty seventh, two thousand, twenty thousand twenty one at six thirty PM to consider petition thirty nine dash twenty for a use variance from the requirements of Article Three, Section three thirty and Article fourteen, Section fourteen seventy one of the Wayham zoning bylaws to Josh and Angela Howard, care of Coastal Life Companies, Inc. of eight Quaker Meeting House Road, Forestale, Mass. zero two six four four, proposing an accessory apartment located at Ten Bog Iron Road, Wayham, Mass. That appears on Assessors Map thirteen, Lot one oh one in the SC Strip Commercial Zoning District. Go ahead.
Okay, is Miss uh, Mister and Mrs. Howard in?
They're also, I'm the GC on the job, Ben Thomas from Coastal Life.
All right, you want to present the case for us, please?
Sure, um, we have the accessory dwelling going up. It's for her, uh, for Angela's mother. She's wheelchair bound. They have recently purchased the house and are wanting to stay on property. Um, as she grows older, et cetera, Angela's gonna help with taking care of her mom, so it'll be out the back of the property. A full dwelling with, you know, a handicap kitchen and bathroom, all one floor with a ramp going to it. Um, it's not designed of any use for an income property of any sorts. It's, it's a can entirely handicap accessible dwelling, more or less.
All right, I I did look at the plans and I saw the letter, but the architectural land, we don't have no architectural plan and we don't have the site plan is small. Can you put the site plan on on thing? We couldn't read it. It's eight by eleven, no supply.
Okay, uh.
I got a magnifying glass out. I was able to look at it, but it is very small.
Okay. Hold on one second. I'm sorry. I'm trying to figure this.
It's all right. Take your time.
I uh, I'm actually Matt Holmes, the architect.
Oh, yeah.
MJH Architect. So um, Ben, if it's easier, I could share my screen.
Absolutely. I'm, I don't know what the heck this thing's doing.
Sure.
All right, can you do so, Mr. Home?
Yep. Does everyone see it?
Yeah.
Yeah, way better. Thank you.
So um, Ben, if you'd like, I can just kind of run through it.
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead.
Okay, so um, here's the floor plan. Just gonna kind of zoom in so you can all see it a little bit better. Um, and you can all see my cursor probably, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the extent of the existing home. Right? And this would be the proposed accessory off the back of the existing home. Okay, so the addition, proposed addition here, thirty six feet back. And then from this point forward is the extent of the existing home. Bog Iron Road is to the plan um, south, plan south, which is actually um, east of of the front of the home. Um, as you could see, it's, it's basically, it's an accessory apartment. Um, you know, kitchen, living room, common space with a bedroom off the back and then a um, a handicap accessible full bathroom with um, laundry inside the bathroom as well. Um, to the north side of the addition would be um, a three season porch that has a relocated slider that has the connection from the main house into the uh, accessory off the back. Um, there's also a slider that um, that comes from the three season porch into the living room kitchen area. Um, on the south side of the property or the the addition, which is plan on the left side of the plan, plan west, I suppose, would be um, a proposed ramp that would, would bring up, um, would come up and give direct access into the accessory on the back. Um, it's gonna be a, it's proposed to be a crawl space, um, just have a concrete dust lab, no full basement or anything like that. Under the three season porch be just son of, son of tubes and more like a deck um, construction. Um, move on to the, here's just kind of a axon that shows it. So this would be the existing home again, and then this is the accessory off the back with the ramps, with the ramp, excuse me. Um, this would be from the exterior again, front of the existing home on your right side here with the existing uh, two car garage. And this would be the new ramp that brings you up into the accessory space, which is located at the back of the property, in the back of the existing house. Um, this is just another angle on the left side from the back. So this is the accessory and then the existing home up on on front. This is all existing as well. These ramps that go down to the basement. And then these are just some exterior. Some exterior elevation shots. So this would be the south side. Um, this would be the proposed new ramp that comes up and goes into the accessory. The accessory is here. Um, this is obviously, this would be the west. So this is the backside. Um, three season porch and then here is the accessory off the back. And then the north is the opposite side. This is the accessory, three season porch. So um, just to give you some numbers, um, so the the heated habitable space, I'll call it, now counting the three season porch, it's eight hundred and twenty nine square feet gross. And then the three season porch is another hundred and eighty three square feet. The addition total is thirty six feet by twenty four, but it does jog in two feet here a little bit, but that is your dimensions. Um, the height um, is about eighteen foot four from grade, from finished grade. Um, and the the pitch of the roof are just basically matching the front. So it's, the main part is a seven pitch and then over the porch on the shed roof would be a four pitch. And that's kind of the uh, the rundown of the design.
All right, very good. I did go check it out today and I saw the ramp on the front and I like what the architect uh, did make it. I mean, it's apparently it's a handicap in laws and they have to care of them. And I like how they made it look kept as a single family there. So it's not a duplex and I would like to, I would like for the record to call it an accessory building, accessory apartment, not a, not a in-law apartment, just for the record. Uh, I'm gonna start. Okay, Jim?
What's the, we we, um, what's the difference between an in-law and an accessory? Where's the, I know we're kind of splitting hairs a little bit here, but I'm sure there's a reason.
Accessory apartments like a lot, kind of a lot easier to grant. And they are pretty much what the architect did. They attach, they look like one house. When you do an in-law and that's why I won't see the thing, it, you can make a brief, it's like a little technicality, but I would like to go with that accessory apartment. If you recall at Jordan Road back then.
Yep.
And it was the, the way to go, that the applicant went with their lawyer with accessory apartment versus in-law.
Okay.
So that's my opinion anyway, so uh.
Does the in-law tend to have more ability to be converted into a second rental income in the future as opposed to an accessory always being a, a, a single household? Is that part of the?
I, I think so. I'm not sure, but I think, I think this is more of an accessory because the way it sits in the building, it doesn't have its own. It does have its own interest, but it doesn't look like a separate dwelling.
No, I, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with you. I just wanted to um, hash it out a little bit. I I absolutely read the whole file. I read the letter. I understand what these folks are doing for a mother and father and the mother is handic, you know, wheelchair confined and the father's coming too and um, I think that this is um, what people should be doing as families. So I'm, I'm all set. Thank you.
If Mr. Requena is with us, he could explain more about these things. I didn't get a chance to talk to him about it today. He's more knowledgeable about accessory and in-law, but anyway, we continue. Yeah, Commissioner Requena, can you, did I make any sense what I said?
Uh, you did. Uh, our bylaw doesn't, doesn't call out an in-law apartment. It only calls out a accessory apartment. At the end of the day, they're, they're all one in the same. Um, it's, it's an. It's, it's an accessory dwelling you attach to the structure. So, um, you can call it anything you want, but it's still an accessory dwelling unit. So accessory apartment or in-law apartment wouldn't, wouldn't have any effect.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that's the answer of the man in charge. All right, very good. We go to Veronica.
Um, I, I like the look of it and, um, you know, keeps, it maintains the look of, of being a single family home. Um, so I don't see any problems with it.
All right, this one, Richard Sample was set on Walter's chair. So, Richard, what do you think?
Just, uh, looking at, I see two means of egress, but I don't see two ramps on both means of egress. Is that something we should be concerned about?
No.
We, we let that commissioner say, uh, decide when they, it becomes a building code. I don't think has something to do with us. I think it's fine, but that would be zoning enforcement. I mean, uh, building code enforcement, that wouldn't be us. So we'll let the commissioner deal with it.
Just asking a question, I guess I, I was out of place.
I really don't know the answer. We can ask, we could ask Mr. Requena. What do you think?
Go ahead, Richard. Can you ask that again?
I was just noticing it's, it's, this apartment's got two means of egress, but only one has a ramp in it. Is there some concern that we should have that both means of egress should have a ramp?
No, no.
Okay.
So, so it, it can have a ramp, but, you know, like the chairman said, it, you know, it, it becomes a building code issue, but, um, at the top of that ramp, it has to have a four foot by four foot landing and, you know, it still has to meet the means of egress requirements, but, but, but you can't, you can't require that they put a ramp at every entrance.
Good with it. It looks like it, it fits the neighborhood well. I'm, I'm done with my questions.
Thank you, Richard. Uh, Jake?
Uh, it looks great.
Uh, Chris, do you have any input?
I'm all, I'm all set. I think everything looked good and, um, you know, I admire her for taking care of her mom and dad. I've done it and, uh, it's a great thing.
All right, very good. And now in the public, is there anyone wanna speak in favor of this project? I hear none. Anyone wanna speak against? All right, I hear none. And that being said.
One more question.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
Um, on the public announcement and everything we've said, they're describing this as S C strip commercial. I don't think that's a strip commercial zone. I think it's either M R thirty or, um, uh, uh, R thirty.
Mr. Requeen is, uh, lettuce as M R thirty.
It does. I thought so. So maybe it's just a typo in the, uh, public announcement. I don't think we should hold it up because of it. I just wanted to clarify that. And, um, it says M R thirty. So in other words, this is a multifamily zone. So it's, to me, that's just more reason to approve.
Okay, very good. Yeah, it does says on Mr. Requena's letter, M R thirty. All right, so that being said, can we get a motion to close?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Jim. Do I have a second?
I'll pull second.
Okay, all in favor to close, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Richard Sample.
Aye, Veronica Debonese.
And I, Nazia Kalasi. So we closed.
And I, Jacob Morrison.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jake, you last.
All right, just go on last.
Okay, okay, okay. So we close. All right, any discussion or any motions? What do you guys like to do?
Make a motion to approve the plan as presented, standard conditions, and wish them well.
Okay, I have a motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
I'll second Veronica Debonese.
Okay, all in favor, say aye and say that name.
Aye.
Sample, aye.
Al Kalasi, aye.
All right, Jacob Morrison, aye.
Veronica.
Yeah, aye.
Okay, it carries. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Thank you, John.
Stop sharing the screen, Mr. Architect.
Yeah, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Now, do we need to, do we need to say aye when we've made the motion or is that considered, uh, um, uh, an affirmative by making the mo- motion and the second? Save a minute.
You're asking, um, I would say just say aye, state your name.
Ken's piping up on that. Ken's, Ken's joined the meeting. What do you think, Ken?
You have to say aye as well. You have to say aye. You're taking action to vote on, saying you have to vote on it.
Because the ayes are above the nos and we always want the ayes to win.
Aye and the nays. All right, very good. Uh, forty dash twenty, Noreen Murray, and it's seventeen Evergreen Street. Ken, that Ken do it this time. He likes to read. Ken, you wanna read it or let Jim do it?
If you want me to read it, give Jim a break.
Either way.
We want you to engage with us.
The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M and decide to consider petition number forty dash twenty for variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table six twenty-two of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Noreen Murray, care of G A F Engineering, Inc. of two sixty-six Main Street, Wareham, Mass. oh two five seven one. Requesting board grant relief for the building coverage maximum of twenty percent and a, and permit a rear wood deck located at seventeen Evergreen Street, Wareham. Assessors map two lot M two seven two in the O V two zoning district.
Very good, uh. G A F Engineering wanna present the case?
Um, can I start, please? So, hi, uh, my name's Noreen Murray. I'm from seventeen Evergreen Street and I'm the applicant. Um, I've engaged G A F in engineering to prepare the variance application and represent me, uh, in response to this letter that I received from David Requena. Uh, Bill Madden from G A F will speak to the details of the application. Thank you very much.
All right, Bill?
Good job, Noreen. Um, Bill Madden from G A F Engineering here on behalf of Noreen, um, Murray. This, this variance was precipitated through an enforcement letter issued by Dave Requena for a deck that was constructed at the rear of her property, um, without the benefit of a permit. It also exceeded, ended up exceeding lot coverage, um, within that zoning district. Back when COVID first broke out, Noreen's father lost his business and he came up here and built that deck for her. Without the, without obtaining a permit and while really looking at what zoning required for it. We submitted a plan along with our application that showed the, the footprint of the, of the deck. It increases, the actual building coverage as we calculated it was twenty point three percent. Um, with the new deck, it comes to thirty-two point five. But first of all, I think we need to talk about the structure. The structure is relatively unique in that is, that is, it is extraordinarily small. It's a six hundred and seventy-two square foot structure. And by today's standards, um, it's really, uh, doesn't, doesn't stand up to, um, the contemporary living style we all have today. So we, you know, that is very small. You can see the presenter just prior to us had a small, had an addition for an accessory apartment that was eight hundred and twenty-nine square feet. So this is a single family detached dwelling of, uh, of six hundred and seventy-two square feet, and we think that that's, um, a little unusual for a building of that small, that small and what have you. And we think that satisfies the uniqueness with associate, associated with the structure. When you look at that existing, um, structure, there is a deck on the right-hand side of the plan. That, the zoning card called that a deck. It was thirty-two square feet. That's not very large. It's really a platform. Really more or less a platform that just sticks out there, but the new deck was added to that and expanded. The total deck was expanded to approximately five hundred, five hundred square feet. We think that the deck provides Noreen with an opportunity to, uh, for normal enjoyment and reasonable use of the property, um, by adding, adding that structure. Um, with new rules coming around with social distancing, things of that nature, that we don't know if these are permanent. We don't know if they're temporary. You know, really, a six hundred and seventy-two foot house doesn't really allow you too much of an opportunity to, you know, carry out normal socialization, um, activities and things of that nature. So we think that, um, you know, the hardship that's involved would be really depriving her of normal and reasonable use of the property. Um, we also further believe that the, you know, that the project does not create a health hazard or nuisance. It doesn't increase any public services or what have you. So it does not, um, it does not have any detriment to the public good associated, associated with it. So we think that the, the project in the, in the variance can stand up to, uh, increasing the, the lot coverage from the twenty point three percent to the thirty-two point five percent. Now, it does also create centralized access to the backyard, which didn't exist. And that's all part of the using, the using of the property. So, um, that's pretty much what I have to offer on it. Now, it is a wood deck. It's about forty inches above the ground. Um, and I think they may have to get an after the fact building permit in, in the event that, uh, this variance is granted. So I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, uh, I want, I wanna ask, uh, Commissioner Requena. Now, the existing building coverage is twenty point three, so it's an existing non-conforming because it's so I, I believe that point three makes existing non-conforming, right, David?
Yes.
Okay, and apparently that little piece of deck encroached to the setback, that's in a way helps. So that's an existing non-conforming as well, isn't it? That little piece of deck or step, whatever you call it.
I don't have the plan in front of me, Mr. Chairman, but.
It is five point three and the setback is ten. So I believe extending the non-conformity, if the board can see it as extending the non-conformity, we could treat the other special permit, not a variance, wouldn't you agree? Because it's existing non-conforming.
What, what's the non-conformity though? I, I believe the non-conformity was not relating to the, the existing setback. I think it was a coverage non-conformity.
Right, but, but it's non-conforming because it's twenty point three and, uh, the, the required coverage is twenty percent. So the zero point three above makes it non-conforming.
It does, but if you're creating a new non-conformity with respect to a different article in the bylaw, it would be a variance for a new non-conformity. It's an additional non-conformity above and beyond what was already existing.
But aren't you allowed to extend your non-conformity?
You can, you can, you can aggravate or intensify an existing non-conformity to say so. If, if you have a twenty-five percent lot coverage and you're already at twenty-five point eight percent and you wanna go to twenty-nine percent, that's, that's intensifying or aggravating an existing non-conformity. But if you have a lot coverage non-conformity and your house meets all dimensional requirements and now you wanna make it not conform to any dimensional requirements, that would be a variance for, for a new non-conformity. You're creating an additional non-conformity on top of the coverage.
Right, but we fit the first story you told. Because it's already non-conforming. I, I thought we could extend the non-conformity if the board feels it's not detrimental with a special permit.
It's non-conforming to what respect, Mr. Chairman?
The, 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 the building coverage, it's already non-conforming. And the deck, the way they built it, they're five point eight feet from the setback. But that, that little wooden deck they had, it was five point three. So they extending the non-conformity. You know what I'm saying?
If I could just chime in, the, the, you know, for the setback for an accessory structure is five feet in that zoning district. So I don't know if you, you know, however you wanna do it, I appreciate, I understand what, uh, Dave Requeen is saying, but the, for an accessory structure with the, for the deck, it's five feet.
Is deck accessory or part of the house?
It's, it's, it's part of the structure. It's not.
It's part of the structure. It's not accessory.
Right, but I, I don't have the plan or the letter here with me tonight. But if, if it's less than four feet in height, it's half the required setback anyway, and it's part of a means of egress. So we don't have, I personally don't have any, any opposition to it. It just needs to be legitimized.
So, so, so I, I, I'm just gonna, if you, because you don't have the plan, I think you're gonna have to trust me on this one. So, or the board, my theory, unless the board feels otherwise. The way I look at, if we could give them a relief from fifteen thirty, fif- thirteen fifty-five and call it special permit, if there's not detrimental to the neighborhood, it'll become a special permit because it seems to me that it is existing non-conforming and they extended the non-conformity. If it was conforming, they will have a problem, but it's non-conforming. So, which is, it works on our favor, especially that small piece of deck. It makes it's non-conforming. So personally, I believe it's non-conforming. Jim, go ahead.
Um, I'm looking through the paperwork. I was able to pick up, um, before the meeting, the notice of violation from the building department. Um, Mr. Madden has, um, described a twenty point three, um, building coverage. The violation states that we're taking it from approximately eighteen point two nine percent to twenty-eight point six two percent where twenty percent is permitted. That's, I'm reading that right from the, um, notice of violation. So let's, um, let's be careful not to hang ourselves on a technicality that could be pulled out from underneath us.
Right, but I believe Mr. Uh, Mr. Requena, he, he did rough numbers. It's Mr. Madden planned, uh, stamped these plans. I know for a fact I've done business with them. They're on the money. Bill wanna clarify that.
That's kind of, that's what I thought. I don't know how Dave went about his numbers, but I mean, you know, I'm sure he didn't do it the same way that we, we go about doing it. Um, you know, I think.
Okay.
I think regardless, you know, we, we're adding, we're asking for more. And, you know, regardless of how you wanna deal with it, uh, Mr. Chairman, you know, I think we stand up to the, to the variance standard as well in this instance. But, uh, whatever your, whatever your desire is, is fine with us.
Right, I mean, like I said, the commissioners don't have access to AutoCAD and stuff to get the exact, 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 exact dimensions. The engineer do and they put the stamp on it. So we're gonna go by the engineer, engineer plan. So.
Okay.
I'm gonna go, uh, this one, uh, that's evergreen, but Chris County will sit on this. Chris, where are you? What do you think?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, yes.
What, whatever you, whatever you do tonight, I have to be able to issue a permit at the end of the day. So if it comes back to our desk and it's inaccurate, I won't be able to issue a permit.
Okay.
So always keep that in mind. So.
Okay.
So it, I don't, if Bill is telling us if he had, if he has a certified site plan that says it was already, already non-conforming prior to the addition of this deck, I will accept that. When I write the letter, I use the information provided to me at the time. So what was provided to me at the time, it was conforming. The information that I had at the time that application or that violation was issued, it was, it was a conforming property going to a non-conforming property. If I have a certified site plan from Mr. Madden that, that, that shows and proves that it was non-conforming prior to the application, I can issue that permit and I'm satisfied with that.
Okay, Commissioner, David, if you don't mind, I just text you the plans, the certified plans. Look at it while we discussing it with other members. Chris, go ahead.
I fully trust Bill Madden. Um, he, he does a lot of work in town. I, I've never had any issues with him. I've never had any reason to not trust him. So if he gives us a plan and he certifies that it was non-conforming, I trust that. And, and, and I will accept that moving forward. So I would accept a special permit as the relief on this project with that.
Okay, I sent you the pictures. Look, look at them. So, Chris?
So, so, so I also agree. I mean, I think we should get it straight, whether it's conforming or non-conforming. Um, and, and I'm fine with it, uh, that he gets a building permit and he goes. And, um, I'm not sure about the railings on it and whatnot, but as long as the, uh, building inspector is good with it, then I'm fine with it.
Okay, Veronica?
I agree, as long as Bill, um, certified that what he has is accurate, then falls within our.
The plans are formally certified, but you guys could look at them anyway. Okay, uh, Richard, what do you think? Good with it? You're good. Jake, you last. You're good. Jake, you last.
I think I'm good. How how big was the deck that was on? I haven't even heard that yet. I'm sorry.
Looks like four hundred square feet for me, twenty by twenty, right, Bill?
Well, it's actually five hundred uh due to the shape, it's five hundred square feet.
I have no problem with that, that, you know, you know, that location, that there's no problem with that deck.
Okay, uh, anyone in the audience and the public wanna speak against this project? I hear not anyone in favor.
I'm okay with it.
Yes, you name an address, man, who's in favor?
Um, Joni Paulo and I own twenty Evergreen Street, right across the street.
And you in favor?
Yep.
All right, thank you, Joni.
You're welcome.
All right.
Hello?
Yes.
My name is Derek Marconi. I am resident over at eighteen Evergreen Street, directly across the street. I would also like to speak in favor. Um, in fact, it, I think it makes the house look great.
Well, thank you, Derek. Derek, you said, right?
Yes, Derek Marconi, eighteen Evergreen Street, in favor.
Thank you, Derek. All right, here's the plans for everyone, whoever's looking at it.
And I and I did look again, using Google Earth, I did look and see that the property out behind it is a big open space. It doesn't look like anything that's gonna be developed. Uh, uh, would be developed based on the condos that happen across the field, if you will. My only um, my only other comment, I am in favor of this, my only other comment is that. Since it was built without permit, before permit is um issued, will somebody from the building department? Be going out there and inspecting that, of course, it it it's it meets um code.
Well, let's hope they don't make, they might made them dig those sonotubes.
Yeah, well, you know, I don't mind it being there, but as long as it's built right.
Well, I'm sure the commissioner would not just let it happen like that.
Okay.
All right, uh, uh, David, did you have a chance to look at it? Are you okay with my theory?
I have no objection. Based on this plan, it's a certified plan, and as I said, I I I trust. Bill Madden and his firm and and I would accept this.
Okay, just I want that section, that relief section, is that thirteen fifty five or fifty two? In the bylaws.
That would be thirteen fifty two.
Thirteen fifty two, okay. All right, uh, anymore, anything else you wanna add, Bill?
No, that's um, I'm all set with you, that with with this.
The board, you guys ready to close? The board?
Yes.
To close?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second? Motion to close by Jim?
I second, Chris Conti.
All right, all in favor, say aye, state their name.
Jimmy, aye.
Christopher Conti, aye.
Veronica Debonis, aye.
Nazzy, aye.
Dick Morrison, I I keep forgetting about you, Nazzy, sorry.
That's okay. All right, very good. So that passes now. If the board feel. If we could give them, if the board feel it's less detrimental to the neighborhood, we could give them relief on thirteen fifty two and. Treat it as a special permit. Uh, discussion on that, is everybody on board?
It took me a while to figure out what you're up to, Nazzy, but I agree with you a hundred percent and I would um move to um. State that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood and we should be allowed to grant and as a special permit.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
I second, Chris Conti.
Second by Chris, all in favor, say aye.
Jimmy, aye.
Christopher Conti, aye.
Veronica Debonis, aye.
Nazzy, aye.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Okay, so now we have a special permit. Now, what's the wishes and?
Is presented.
Okay, we have a motion to grant as presented by GF Engineering. With the plan, whatever date is. Plan dated twelve fif- sixteen, two thousand twenty, so motion by Jim to grant as presented standard conditions. Do I have a second for special permit?
I second, Chris Conti.
Second by Chris Conti, all in favor, say aye, state their name.
Jimmy, aye.
Christopher Conti, aye.
Veronica Debonis, aye.
And Nazzy, aye.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
All right, all ayes are carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much, appreciate much appreciated.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
Hey, enjoy your death.
All right, next one, forty one dash twenty, Cornelius Sullivan and that's seven Groveland Street.
The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty one at six thirty P M. To consider petition number forty one twenty for variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table six twenty five. Under the Wareham zoning bylaws for Cornelius Sullivan care of GAF Engineering. Of uh two sixty six Main Street, Wareham, Mass. Proposing to construct a new detached accessory structure located at seven Groveland Street, Wareham, Mass, Accessors Map Three Lot one oh three. In the MR thirty zoning district.
All right, who's presenting this case?
Hi, this is Blaze Theolium, Cornelius Sullivan's general contractor.
Okay.
One street, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Wait, let me just see if I can. Can you see me all right?
There you go. You're on.
Am I on? Okay, and I also have uh Bill Madden from GAF Engineering with me uh this evening. So we're here requesting a variance to exceed the maximum allowed height of twenty feet. Uh, for an accessory building that Cornelius Sullivan would like to construct as a property adjacent to his home. So I'll let Bill speak to the details. Thank you.
All right, Bill.
Okay, Bill Madden, GAF on behalf of Cornelius Sullivan. Um, basically, what we're what we're seeking is a is a variance for the height restriction on a. On an accessory structure. In this particular instance, um. You know, we we have an existing garage that's in in pretty much just repaired that we're looking to upgrade that piece of property. That piece of property is located on a coastal bank, in in a coastal bank, um, and. Coastal banks have unique soils um associated with them. They have unique topography. Associated with them and the existing structure that's um. That's built in the coastal bank is a unique situation itself, so. From a variance standpoint, I think that we we meet the uniqueness with respect to soils, structure with soil slope or topography. And structures, all three in this particular instance, and I think it's pretty easy to uh to acknowledge that. Particular uh element of the plan. We we did um. The average adjacent grades a number, a number of ways and what have you. And the garage that's proposed to be constructed on the site, it's um. You know, it's an accessory structure and it's intended to enhance the uh. The property, both the use and the aesthetics of the property. It's been designed in a manner. That kind of blends in um nicely with the with the existing house that that is there. So um, we think that it's uh. That it helps with the with the use of the land. Uh, by having the structure that's uh designed the the way we, the way it has been on the uh on the site. You know, we think that also, you know, literal enforcement of the bylaw would really um. Impact, you know, the it would it would create a real severe degree of interference with the the legal property rights. I mean, these people have an opportunity and a and 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 an ability to construct. A garage on the site. We're replacing the old garage with something that's new and the same footprint. We've gone through conservation. We have an order of conditions for the work. We've been um, we've been restricted greatly um. By conservation with what we wanna do in there. Uh, there's, you know. The bylaw is pretty strict. I know it's not something that the zoning board gets involved with, but. You know, they would would not let us reconstruct it the way we actually wanted to because it was in a wetland resource area. So respecting that, we we went forward with a design that basically builds the garage. At the same, on the same footprint, reconstruct the existing garage. But we've elevated it a little bit and we've uh, you know, essentially created a two-story um garage, one bay below. And some space up above and that space up above would be utilized as a. As a remote office for Mister Sullivan's business activities um for the for the primary use and. That's really um a focus on it, so we think that. The the variance request. Helps us get that space above the garage for the uh. For the for the office area, so to speak. I mean, it's a private workspace for remote, remote work, exactly what it is. So, you know, the structure itself will not will not create any uh health hazard or nuisance. And we think that uh, you know, it will increase property values in in the in the neighborhood, so we think the public good is met. In this in this instance as well, is there is really no detriment. To the general public or the public services that are provided to the community as a whole. As a result of this project moving forward. So we're respectfully requesting. A uh, a building height of thirty feet to the top of, to the cupola that's on the on the building. And we also have a a um, the ridge of the building is at twenty five feet. So the letter that accompanied the application indicated what we were, what we were seeking. And how we were um, and what we're proposing to do. So essentially, that's it. I think we, you know, we meet. The standards for the variance in this case, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, uh, good presentation, but I don't think you meet the standards. However, why why wouldn't you attach it to the building with the breezeway? Then you don't need us. That's. I personally see it as a separate apartment above the garage and I'm not interested doing that personally. I mean, I let the board speak for themselves, but. You could attach it to the building and and you comply with the heights and.
So this is the homeowner, this is Cornelius Sullivan?
One second, sir. One second, Mister Sullivan. I'll let you speak, just give me a minute.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna pass it by the board. Jimmy, start with you. The mute button, Jimmy.
I need to unmute myself.
Uh, you did it again.
I was using my space by now, I'm permanent, okay, so. Maybe Bill can answer this for me, maybe, I don't know. It looks to me like you're using the existing slab and then just like building on piers on the back half of the building. Is that what's happening?
That's pretty much uh, an oversimplified um description what's going, but that's the intent, yes.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I, okay, that's, it is oversimplified because you said you're gonna raise the bill, I I listened. But okay, so the first, the front half of the of the street. Half or sixty percent of the building will have a concrete floor and the back half will have a wooden floor. Is that correct?
Yes, um, I thought it was gonna be all concrete myself, but.
Okay.
It could be mistaken on that.
I see the piers and all that, so that's why I'm just trying to understand, okay.
They could be concrete piers also in, you know, with a con- with a concrete slab.
Okay, okay, that's it, that's, I was just trying to, so. I I get it. I get what Nazzy's saying about attaching it, then you don't need us. Um, other than that, I'll let the homeowner speak for himself and say why he wants to detach it or why.
Okay, I wanna go through Veronica first. Veronica.
I don't have any questions at this time.
All right, this one Mister Sample sent on it, Richard.
No questions at this time.
Jake?
No questions.
Chris, any input?
Um, the only thing that I I didn't see in the plan was a a side view. I mean, I see the front door. And then I saw the the rear part of the um, of the new structure, but I didn't see the side. Maybe it's just missing in my packet. I was just wondering where the door is to get in it and. Um, I didn't see any of that.
All right, uh, I I guess that, Bill, do you have an architecture plan for the whole thing? You could show them.
I don't have them on my on my uh computer, Nazzy, I, you know, I'm kind of um. At a technical disadvantage of being able to put that stuff up on the screen. I don't have it.
Okay, I wanna let Mister Sullivan speak. What do you wanna say, sir? Name and address for the record.
My name is Cornelius Sullivan and I'm the homeowner at seven Groveland Street. And I appreciate everybody's time this evening. I think when you look at the plan. Um, as I have been talking to Mister Madden and my builder. Um, we did come to the realization that we could have attached this. Building to the existing house and therefore not had to deal with the height limitation. But the challenge I have with that is, you know, forgetting the aesthetics, I don't think it will look as nice. It will. It will obviously be much larger if I had done that, but I have a a group of very nice neighbors that live in my community. And some of them live directly across the street from me that look out at the water. If I was to connect this. Existing building to the home, it's probably twenty five feet between the existing building in my actual home. So I'd be building some type of a, a, an attached breezeway to go over to the existing building and then. Being able to put that existing building up as high as the the house, maybe thirty five or forty feet high or whatever the requirement is. What I'm trying to do here is be respectful to my neighbors who are very good people. And simply build on the existing footprint and repair a building that is. You know, really falling apart. It was built in nineteen thirty one. A lot of things have gone wrong with the building. And I would like to put an office on the second floor for my use. I work from home right now and will continue to work from home. The other thing I would mention here is that what may not come up on this plan is that if you look at Groveland Street. And you stand on that street, my neighbors being on the other side of it, they look out to the water, to my point earlier, but also. The pitch of that driveway going down into the existing garage is a little more than four feet right now from the street. To the base of that garage. So if we go up twenty six, thirty feet. It's already pitched down four feet. Looking at it from the street, the height of that building is going to look like it's. Twenty feet from the street anyway, but my my overriding concern, because I could certainly attach this building, certainly bring it up higher, it's. It's not as aesthetically pleasing and it's detrimental to my neighbors and I don't know that. The, I hope the board is somewhat sympathetic to my plight of trying to assist. Uh, other personnel around and not blocking the view to the beautiful waterfront, and that's that's really one of the goals here.
I I I do like your variance argument. I mean, it does. I'm glad I heard that. It does make sense, yeah. A good hardship, good argument. Thank you, Mister Sullivan. I'll go back to the board uh before I go to the public. Uh, you guys wanna add anything after Mister Sullivan spoke? No, no, Conti, Veronica?
I do like his explanation. I would be interested to hear what some of the neighbors have to say.
Okay, uh, Jake, you on, after Mister Sullivan speak, would you like to speak?
Um, I I think I I like what he said.
Okay, and uh, Jim?
I'm all set.
All right, good, and uh who else we have in? Uh, Chris and Rich, we talked to, right, Rich? You're good, okay. We go to public. Is there anyone who wanna speak against this project? I'm sorry, in favor of this project first. Okay, I hear none, anyone in the public wanna speak against this project? Okay, I hear none. Uh, if the if the applicant wanna add anything, I would. Before, I would like to move to close, unless the applicant wanna add anything else. Bill or Mister Sullivan, would you like to add something else?
I appreciate your time tonight, thank you.
Yeah, I'm all, I'm all set as well, thank you.
All right.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close by Jim, do I have a second?
I second, Richard Sample.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye and state their name.
Jimmy, aye.
Richard Sample, aye.
Veronica Debonis, aye.
And Nazzy, Alclasi, aye.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Okay, very good. Apparently, this is a variance and uh. Based on the statute of requirement on chapter, I guess, Mass General Laws forty eight, I think it's chapter, section ten. I believe the the applicant meets the statute requirement, the fourth statute requirement. Based on that, if any board member agrees, wanna make a motion to grant if they wish.
So moved for a variance.
Okay, so we have a motion by Jim to grant the variance for. Seven Groveland Street. Do I have a second?
I second, Richard Sample.
Second by Richard, all in favor, state their name and say aye.
Jim Echobachi, aye.
Richard Sample, aye.
Veronica Devonese, aye.
And Nazzy Alclasi, aye.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Okay, a carriage. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
You're up, Bill.
All right, we're gonna go continue public hearing thirty-four dash twenty. Zachary Leton and that is twenty-two Weaver Street. Public hearing still open. We continue at last time. Is the Mr. Leton, Zach there?
Mr. Chairman, yes, Zach is, uh, the applicant is here.
All right, the floor is yours. The hearing's still open. Go ahead.
The floor is mine?
Yes, we got your letter. I read it. Uh, if you want me to speak or you wanna speak, I let you, I read your letter. You said you had a building permit. You had a building permit to, to construct an accessory up and I mean, an apartment or a building permit from the plumbing and, and electrical. You have a building permit says I wanna construct a kitchen, bathroom and all that?
So the original permit, I believe I, I finished off the upstairs as almost like a I didn't specify everything that it was going to have. There was never uh, I guess, plans requested from me, like an entire layout when I went forth with finishing this. So I went, when I went forward with finishing this, I, you know, I pulled the permits. And I guess I just didn't really fully understand the entire process, to be perfectly honest. So I was, I went through, pulled the permits. It passed plumbing, passed electrical, as I'm sure you read the, if you read the, the letter. Um, and it got all the way through to the very end when I got told that I was in, in violation uh, because it had a kitchen, um, and it was considered, you know, an accessory apartment. And that's, that, it was at that point where I already, I already bought everything. Everything was already built and just awaiting final approval to get installed. And so unfortunately, when I read that letter um, and got the violation notice, I, I guess, to be perfectly honest, I just didn't fully understand what it meant with this process. And so as, I kinda looked at it as the only option that I had was to just kind of put the stuff in that was just sitting and already, already purchased um, to, to finish that off instead of, you know, in hindsight, taking a step backwards and hopefully trying to resolve the issue. That's where, in my opinion, where, you know, where I guess I got myself into trouble and I did the wrong thing. Um, and unfortunately, you know, the situation that I have now, um, I, I don't think anybody, anybody could foresee what, you know, what happened is uh, we moved to Boston and unfortunately, based off of work scenarios and financial situations, the entire city was moved down. We couldn't, we couldn't live in a four hundred square foot apartment anymore and work from home and all these other things that were just happening all around us. So unfortunately, the only, the, the reality was, was we kinda took the only option on the table and we had to move back here. Um, and now there's really no, no end in sight. We really have no idea when, if, if at any point my fiancee is even gonna go back to work. She's now currently working from here and we're both living from here. And like I said, I just, this is kinda what really drove me to kind of, instead of just lying, you know, everybody told me I, I could have just lied low and kinda just went, you know, flew under the radar. But to me, I just, it just didn't feel, I just wanted to, you know, I wanted to present this in good faith with the entire community and just kinda propose the situation that I'm in. I did admit, like, I thought I was doing the right thing originally with the construction. And I think I did, but unfortunately, you know, just, I guess it was a lack of communication on both parties.
Nazzy, can I interrupt?
Sure. Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, to the applicant, through, through, through the chair, to the applicant. I, just for a point of clarity, as I'm listening to you, there is a primary residence on the house. There's a home. I believe you have a homeowner. Did, when you moved to Boston, did you rent out your house? Is your house rented under a lease?
Yes, that's, that's exactly correct. And that's kind of why I, I'm in the garage. I'm in, I'm upstairs above the garage is because they're great people and I just can't ethically, you know, I can't, I can't, you know, evict, evict them. They're great people who, a great young couple who I've never had any problems with and they're just great members of the community. Um, it just, you know, I just unfortunately I couldn't kick them out so that I could live there. So I'm just, you know, this is just the situation that I'm in.
All right, I, the, the reason I, I read your letter, somehow in your letter, you're trying to put the burden in the town. That the electrical inspector, because if you have a garage, you could do whatever you want for electrical work, work and plumbing. It doesn't, that does not stop you. So it's, it's the burden on you to get a permit to do an apartment. So what you did, you didn't get a permit for an apartment. You would have known to begin with, but it doesn't stop you from doing plumbing there as well as electric. But it does forbid you to build the kitchen and that's what happened. You went for your final inspection and the, the building inspector said you can't have a kitchen. So you creating a second dwelling, which is, it needs a variance and it's a hardship. Now you could, you could keep what you have without a kitchen. Uh, I don't know how, how you gonna, I mean, you could have a bathroom and you could have lights and everything above a garage.
I know, that's kind of the situation that we're in is it's like, how do you live without a kitchen?
I, I do understand. In the same time, uh, we, if you, you don't, you don't meet the criteria of variance to, for me personally, maybe the board will, will agree with you to give you a second dwelling on the property. I'm gonna let, start with Veronica. She, what she thinks and we go back to you, Veronica.
Um, I'm in agreement with you, um, Mr. Chairman regarding, um, it's on the applicant to get the building permit. Um, and I, I think he could move forward without having a kitchen with a bathroom and a living space. And it is, if it's a temporary situation, um, as he's describing, I, I, I personally don't think that, um, we should be granting a variance for this. I think because we'll have a lot of people, um, kinda standing in line to do the same thing with this type of situation.
All right, this, this one, Mr. Sample, sent on it, Richard? What's your input on that?
Good this time.
Good, uh, Jake?
Um, same, I'm good.
Okay, uh, anyone on the public wanna speak against or in favor of this project? Okay, I hear none. Uh, so app- apparently me and Veronica are not for this project. So as, if, if we both votes no, it's dead on the water, even of the other three says yes. Uh, I'm personally stuck, I'm, I'm, I personally do not, I'm not comfortable granting second unit in that neighborhood. Uh, you could keep it without a kitchen. I mean, legitimately, it's still a living space. You're not supposed to, but the bylaw allow you to have electric and plumbing, but not a kitchen. Uh, I don't know how you feel about it. I guess, uh, Veronica stated her mind as well. If you want us to continue for a vote, honestly, we will.
Question?
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
Well, um, I didn't have the file on this one with me. What, what's the zoning for twenty-two Weaver Street? Is that MR?
MR thirty.
MR? So he could have a two-family there, but he can't have a accessory apartment or he can't?
He don't, he can have a two-family, but he, he don't have the square footage, nor does he have the frontage. So he needs two variances.
He'd need two variances, one for what, uh, for frontage and one for what size?
Correct.
And what do, and what are we being asked for here in this?
Two variances.
That's what, that's
Need a height variance because it's existing. That garage has been existing, so he doesn't need a height variance.
If, if I may, um, add to some of your objections. So going back to the entire, to the permitting, um, when I did pull the permit to finish the upstairs, um, and again, I know you're saying that it is on the homeowner to, um, to, I guess, go forward with the entire plans, um, I believe I kind of explained to like finish it off, um, which is kind of why I was talking about the plumbing and the electric and um, I guess I just was finding a, a, a hard time trying to find the connection of how I kinda deviated from the plan when I guess I, you know, I never really got asked for a plan. And going back then, I think I mentioned this before, like twenty, I was twenty-four years old. This was really my first interaction with any public, uh, you know, any local government. Um, I didn't, I was kinda just doing what I was being asked for. You know, I was trying to, to, to really go along and to, um,
I, I totally understand and I, I like to always support young people to do things. But when you went to apply for a building permit, you, did your building permit says I wanna build a kitchen, a bathroom and living room and a bedroom above my garage. This is, this is what I'm trying to get you to. Or you just asked a plumber to do the plumbing and the plumber went for the permit. It, it, this is what happened, isn't it?
Uh, I believe when I went to, I was gonna like finish this off with like a wet bar and, you know, a bathroom and all that stuff.
Right.
Yeah, so, but yeah, I did not fully submit any, I guess, you know, set of plans or anything. As you could see what I submitted with the, with the layout, I had to do this just, it was all after the fact. Um, for this process. Um, and if I may kind of address the temporary housing situation?
Yep.
I mean, we've been going through this, you know, for, it's been a year now and there's still no end in sight. We, you know, when my girlfriend left her, her office, you know, one day, she never knew that that was like the final day that she had to step into her office and that was over, you know, that was a year ago now. Um,
I understand. We totally understand that.
Say like to live here temporarily, this is kinda where I'm getting, like going from, is that this, this whole situation, if this doesn't qualify for uniqueness, I don't know what qualifies for uniqueness. I understand that this situation that I'm in, um, is just, you know, this is kinda just what, where we're at right now with, you know, unfortunately, working from home. And really, we just kinda had to come back here as we had no other place to go. So if there is kind of getting into like, to, you know, to pass on a technicality of, you know, not having a kitchen, uh, again, unfortunately, we we wouldn't be able to, to stay here and I really have no other place to go. This is, you know, I, I know it's kind of a lot to ask, um, but I, I honestly and genuinely believe that the situation that everybody's in right now is very unique. Um, and I know mine is not the only case. Um, however, really wanted to be proactive and try to, you know, bring this to the board in full light and, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm trying to do the right thing here. I, I'm happy to do really whatever it takes, but, um, and I guess I'm just, that's kinda where I'm at.
It is, it is unique, but you don't have a hardship. It just, you gotta keep in mind, it's, it's easy as it sounds for the board to say, yes, we'll give you an apartment. We have to consider twenty thousand people in town, what we doing. I mean, it's not ours to give. It's not the six people to give.
Can I, can I give a quick suggestion, guys?
Yeah, correct.
Um, if we approved, approved this, we put it in a condition that it's only him, only Zach that could live in that, in that building. And if he sold property or anything, then that just goes away. The kitchen has to come out. It all disappears. Because what if the people that live in his house right now have a five-year lease? He has nowhere to go. And that's all I'm getting at is no one else can live there, just Zach himself. That's a sugge- suggestion, guys.
You can, no, you can't put a condition. That's the thing. I wish we can. Unfortunately, you cannot condition. You can't tell people to tear the kitchen off after you give
Ken's gonna say something.
Chairman, you can condition a variance.
How?
You added, just as you would a condition on a special permit, you added a condition on the variance.
I don't think, with all due respect, I don't think a variance can be conditioned. It's approved as presented.
Mr. Chairman, it's called a sunset clause. You can, you can make it so that um, just as Jake said, you can make it so that it, it expires upon an action or a certain date.
You sure?
I'm pretty sure.
Okay, what's that called? Sunset action?
Sunset clause.
Sunset clause. Okay.
And it expires on a, on an action or a date?
Right.
So if, if we grant, if we grant relief, uh, granting has to include the action or the date that would cause it to cease.
Right, so, so it can be conveyance of the property or it can be a date set by the board.
Oh, okay. Can we condition also not to be rented? As, in the second apartment?
I'm gonna defer to Ken on this one. Um, the extent of the information in that clause, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Any, the condition applies to the, the property, not to the person.
All right. So we could condition it upon the sale of the property and cease and desist, I guess, right? That's what you're saying, David?
Yes.
Okay. Rock, what do you think?
I have a question. So what if, uh, are we able to condition it? Um, in a way that this would make this property, um, so it would, it would cease when sold, but also he would have to maintain this property as his primary residence?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
All right, okay. Jim, you okay with that?
I think anything that we come up with that gets relief for this person, I'm okay with, uh, to, within reason.
Richard, you okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
And Chris, you have any comment?
Uh, no, I like, I like the, the condition idea of, uh, being that you're permanent, uh, residence. I'm not sure what Zach's plans were when, um, things get back to normal and people can go back into the office, whether he plans to move to so, to Boston or not. I'm not sure what his, what his future plans, but I do like the, um, conditions added.
Uh, Ken, as a part, do you think Rich have time to draft this decision for us?
I can ask. He's been pretty busy with the Board of Selectmen lately, but I can ask and see what he can do.
How long, what do we have? Fourteen days to file with the clerk?
Right, fourteen days since, after the decision is made.
Can you, can you draft something and we review it all?
Yeah, I can do that.
All right.
Run by Rich if I can.
And what's the deadline on that? Uh, March twenty-fifth? All right, uh,
Another question.
Yeah.
Is it possible for us to extend for a hundred and eighty or three hundred and sixty-five days that our decision?
We can, the decision now from the, from the application, you get ninety days to come up.
The applicant and the board.
Uh, if they both agree, yeah.
So what stops, what, what stops us from extending, allowing him to continue to live there for um, three hundred and sixty-five days, uh, take a month off of it and, um, see what, see where we are in the world at that point.
Extending a violation, building, building court violation?
Where, you, you, so you're saying the violation continues to exist and you might, you might, um, amplify his issue. Okay.
Let's say, God forbid, there's a fire, he's not gonna be
Together.
What's that?
Go back to it, go back to your, um, sunset clause.
Yeah. Okay. If that's the case, I guess we could close, close the public hearing. Uh, we have, uh, what do we have? Forty-five days to come up with a vote? Ken, how much time we have to, to come, to come up with the vote after we close? How much time we have?
I believe it's thirty days.
Yeah, either we could vote on it tonight or we could vote on it next time, wh- after we read the draft that Jim, uh, Ken writes on hopefully
Take a vote of confidence in the chair to approve the, uh, the language on, that gets drafted and, and vote tonight?
You say that again, Jim? I didn't get it.
Could we, could we give you a vote of confidence for you to go in and read what gets written, be it by Ken, by Sonia, by the town council, by the applicant? the town council, by the applicant? And when you're satisfied with what you read, um, our vote, um, we could.
I might, I might, the thing is, I might, you guys might go for it, I might not.
Okay.
So, I mean, you guys all gonna agree on the language. Everybody gonna agree and sign it on that specific one.
Okay.
So either we close, like I said, make a decision based on the on the draft to be signed, or we'll wait, close the public hearing, wait for the draft, and next time we meet, we'll vote. So what you wishes?
I'd like to do it the way you just stated. Close the public meeting, wait for the draft, and vote on it during our next meeting.
Veronica, you good with that?
Yeah, I agree.
Mister Chairman, if I may, um, I'd like to address the board through you. Uh, I do have a few requests. If you if you're going to approve this, and I don't have any opposition to that. Uh, I just would like a few other conditions added to this approval. Uh, I'd like that the applicant secure any permits that that he failed to secure at the time it was constructed, and that he get all inspections and an occupancy permit for that dwelling unit, so that we can ensure you know, adequate safety, if he's gonna have people living there.
Right, I mean, what what?
See permit or final inspection. We don't know how safe it is.
Right, whether we whether we grant the variance or not, he still have to comply with all building codes and other boards. It doesn't relieve him from any other boards. For the conservation planning, whoever, who whatever, uh, historical building, plumbing, electric, this is, it doesn't relieve him from any of that. Of course, he's gonna have to go through that path.
I have no problems with amending my motion per Dave Requena's request.
Okay, uh, we can do that. So we have a motion by Jim to close the public hearing, uh, make a draft, and have incorporate that the commissioner request in uh, as conditions on the variance. And uh, next time we meet, uh, if everybody are good with the con- with the thing, we'll vote.
If we send somebody off to create a draft, we're gonna make a sunset clause. Is the sunset clause gonna be um, based on transfer of title, or is it gonna be based on something different?
I would be more comfortable personally, transfer of title.
Okay, just trying to get it clear for whoever's gonna write this.
Right, uh, everybody, Veronica?
So i- is it possible that it's written? I I I think that um, I I would like to see it as his primary residence. If he decides that he's ready to move and he doesn't need to be there, I don't think that apartment should be legalized to then rent. So I think if it's not his primary residence, it expires, or if the property is sold, it expires.
Okay, if we could draft it this way.
Mr. Our voluntary surrender of the um, variance.
Okay, so you with Veronica. You agree, okay. All right, Richard, you good with that?
I agree with Veronica's statement.
All right, Jake?
Zach, does that make you feel a little bit better?
Okay, and Chris, you have input? Even though.
I I I agree. I think that sounds good. I'd like to hear if uh, Zach's happy with that or not.
But I ask, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, like I made mention before, um, really anything to just make sure, like I said, any of the codes that I need to, you know, make sure that everything's verified and up to code. I'm happy to do that. Um, I know somebody, yeah, part of the, um, I guess the, what is it, the sunset clause is changing it upon if I if I was tall. Um, that's, that's totally, totally fine with me, so.
All right, that being, okay, very good. So that being said, so let's move to close, right, Jim?
We've moved to close. We've made a motion. We've already moved and closed, and I think we've mo- made a motion, I believe.
Did we close? I'm losing, we didn't close.
We didn't? Okay, then I move to close.
Can I clarify something?
Sure.
Zach, I I I, you kind of cut out a little bit. I just want to make sure that um, you understand what it was that I said about this being your primary primary residence for that apartment. So if you move out, you can't then rent the apartment. That's above the garages. Did you understand that?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so can I have a second on Jim's motion to close?
Jacob Morrison, second that.
Second, all in favor to close, say aye.
Jimmy, aye.
Sample, aye.
Veronica Devenes, aye.
And Nazia Alcalasi, aye. Jake? Jake?
Now I make the motion to uh, uh, grant the variance as discussed and amended as per Dave Requena's requests with other standard conditions to apply.
You, if I, you don't want to wait until we read the draft and we vote next? No, okay, we have a motion by Jim. Do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion with uh, those other words that you said, Naz, to wait till the draft is made.
You you can't. He made a motion to grant now. Either you're gonna go with it or not.
I think he wanted to go.
Withdraw my motion.
What's that, Jimmy?
I withdraw my motion.
He withdraws, okay, so I guess that uh, anybody would like to make a motion, or we could just leave it until next week, or anybody would like to make a motion, Ken?
Jimmy, was that your intent, right? You were you were intending for us to look at the draft, right? Yeah.
All right, somebody else? Richard, you could make a motion, or Jake? Okay, I hear none, so I guess, Richard, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Jake, you good?
Yes.
All right, so very good. Public hearings closed. Uh, we have thirty days to surrender a vote, so apparently the plan is, Mister Latanders, we're gonna look at the draft, and everything is hap- if everybody's happy with it, and next hearing, we'll vote on it on the tenth. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we go on to continue public hearing, twenty-six dash twenty. Uh, Carol Attorney Moore and Kevin Nicholson, that was three Oak Hill Road. Uh, we started that hearing back on.
I was a year younger.
Yeah, almost, on uh, the twenty-six twenty, and that was on, I think, on Wednesday, the nine, December ninth. And I guess, uh, does Rich, both Rich and Chris were here. Do you know who sat on the case? Do you guys remember who was sitting on it?
On uh, Nicholson?
Yeah, no, Oak Hill, yeah, Nicholson.
Uh, yes, I believe I sat on um.
Okay, so very good. So Mister Conti's saying on that. Public hearing still open, this is Counselor Morton, cheers.
Hi there, Attorney Morton here. Um, I hope that you were able to get the revised plans. If not, I can share my screen, or Mr. Buckland can. Um, the new plans that were actually approved, um, why we've had the delay, as we've been going through conservation. Um, so you can see quite a bit of change regarding the original plans that you saw. This is, if you recall, the property right on the Bluffon Oak Hill, um, where it's a smaller cottage, and we're looking to expand that and do expand the FAR. The original application we had, um, was looking for an FAR of around twenty-three hundred. Um, over there, you can have fifteen hundred. Um, and we've actually through conservation, because they had concerns regarding the water over there in the runoff, we reduced the FAR. So right now, we're only looking for um, a hun- uh, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet. So that is only a variance of um, two hundred and sixty-eight square feet. I think that's the plan to be January eleventh. Believe that's the older one, Ken, if you want. I can do the, see that one says October. There should be a newer one, I believe Sonia put online. One eleven.
Yeah, if you know it, could you tell us the um, FAR on the original plan and the FAR on the new plan?
Um, yes, so they actually, oh, it's kind of hard to see on the zoning table there. Um, but the, so the max FAR in that district is, for the small lot, is fifteen hundred. Existing FAR of the um, lot is eight hundred, is a small cottage. And we're seeking um, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight. So we're only seeking now a variance with two hundred and sixty-eight square feet.
They're doing it in square feetage, they're not doing it in percentages, huh? Okay.
Yeah, that's what they have on the table. We could do the calculations.
That's all right.
Um, but you can see here, really, um, we're not expanding the footprint much, just that piece in the front. Um, this has been approved through conservation, so that's why we had the delay. Um, the engineer was able to get everything approved. Um, and to their, um, to their liking regarding the bank down there in the wetland. So we hope that this is kind of a compromise. Um, we understand this is valuable property and and unique property of being on the on the coast there. So in hoping that we can get our two, our two levels, um, which the petitioner really needs for his family. Um, so we're welcome to any questions, but that's really the change that we've made here.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Jimmy?
I'm good.
Uh, Jim is good. Ver- Veronica?
This is um, R thirty, is that right? Right, that's.
Yes, R thirty, small lot.
Yeah.
You can kind of see, yeah, on the on the top.
Yeah, it's R thirty, MR thirty.
R thirty or MR thirty?
It's R thirty.
Is it R thirty?
Chairman, yep, if you see the zoning district table, it's kind of sideways there on the top.
So anyway, it's our, it's thirty thousand, existing non-conforming. Veronica, what do you have to say?
Um, I'd like to hear what some of the other board members have to say. I'd also like to know what um, the other structures in the neighborhood look like.
Right, all right, very good. Uh, Chris?
So so from the original plan, I think I saw, it looks like that you, the original plan went up to the um, existing garage. Now you're pushing it back, and you're making it just a little bit wider. Is that correct?
Yes, if you're looking at the October plan.
Yes.
Um, yep, and it decreases um, it by quite a bit, about six hundred square feet. So we really reduced that, and that was mainly because of conservation, um, making sure they were okay with that, and whatever runoff would go towards the water over there.
I'm um, I'm okay. I guess I would like to hear from the public, because I think if I remember correctly, there was uh, somebody across the street that um, was worried about their view or something, so I guess I'd like to hear from the public also.
Correct, all right, we we'll get to that. Jake?
Uh, no questions at this time.
Richard, you have any input?
Most, thank you.
All right, let's go to the public. I believe the gentleman across the street was at issue, is the gentleman here from across the street? Okay, I guess he's not. Uh, okay, anyone in the public want to speak against or in favor of this project? I guess there's none. Any input from the board, or you'd like to close?
If i- i- unless somebody pipes up um, and says, oh gee, I didn't know how to work my microphone, I make a motion to uh, close the public hearing.
Okay, but just before, I don't have the whole thing in front of me, just I turn it on, can you just tell me, so you're here for?
For variance on the FAR.
The variance on FAR, it's not, you're not existing non-conforming?
No, no, the the lot's uh, eight hundred square feet, so it's already under, under that. So we're not expanding that. That's already conforming. So it would be a variance.
Fortunately, I can't see the plans. What 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 size is the lot? Fifty, fifty-nine hundred?
Yes.
And where was the coverage right, at the FAR right now? What do you have for FAR? Oh, here we go.
Um.
Next, or fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
Existing eight hundred, so you propose and so, uh, so you are conforming before, so you need, you need a variance. Okay. So you need a variance on two hundred and sixty-eight square feet, and that's the only variance you're looking for?
That's correct, needs all the other setbacks.
Okay, all right. Thank you for explaining, so uh.
Is is there any hardship here?
Yeah, so this is a one-story. I tried to explain that before, um, and he's a dad and has children and we're looking for more space there. These were small coll- cottages. Um, we already showed on the other, um, you, I think you had mentioned, um, looking for other properties near there. There was that, I believe it was twelve Oak Hill. There was a similar build, almost the exact same, where our structure is actually smaller than that. Um, and looking for that two-story living now, again, the same argument, that people are at home, working from home, their families are there, and creating that room and functionality.
Okay. And I, Counselor, what, you guys are raising the garage totally?
Um, I think that is, Brad, are you here from J C Engineering? You still in here?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Okay, can you start?
Do you have me?
Yeah.
Yeah, the the garage itself will be complete, uh, demolished. R A Z E, raise, not raise an elevation.
I mean demolished.
Yeah, demolished, yep.
And uh, okay, so that doesn't go, doesn't add up to the FAR, it doesn't add up to the FAR, right? But doesn't mean it really matter.
Yeah.
Mister, Mister Ivan, is that the owner or the neighbor? Are you here for that case, Mister Ivan? No, I, I don't, he can't hear me. Mister Ivan?
Evan, Evan, yeah, that's the homeowner, Mister Nicholson.
That's your applicant, okay. All right, very good.
So so something was just said, if I may, Mister Chair. Um, the FAR, the garage is not calculated as part of the FAR? Is that what I heard?
It it was not included as part of uh, the FAR calculations. The current house is uh, eight hundred square feet. The garage itself is, I think, two hundred square feet. Uh, so if if it was calculated, uh, then the increase would be considerably smaller, sixty-eight square feet. Um, I'm not sure if the building commis- building commissioner can clarify that um, on how he calculates floor area ratio.
What what it is right now is eight hundred and two hundred thousand, the maximum FAR, that's fifteen hundred. So it is, it's conforming, it's it's not non-conforming. If it was a non-conforming, we could extend it as a special permit. So apparently, this is a variances, it's not existing non-conforming. So it does conform. You're allowed fifteen hundred, you have a thousand, even if you had the garage. So anyway, it's it is definitely a variance. I personally don't have a problem with that. I think it's fine. Uh, and I mean, it's a plus there. I I don't believe they're raising totally that garage, but that's nice of them. And I think it'll be nice, all that neighborhood coming up nice, so. I don't know. Jim, Veronica?
Uh, I just have a comment to make about, um, you know, approving these, well, cases that are coming before us as variances, um. I think maybe the FR, FAR, maybe something, um, and it's come, uh, there've been a few cases that have come before us recently, um.
I understand what you're saying, Veronica, if I might jump in. I hope I'm not stepping on you. I think it might be something that we need to look at with Ken as far as language in the zoning bylaws more than anything else. I don't know if that's what you're trying to say.
They are working on it as we speak. Trust me. So we are work, well, everybody's working on changing the FAR. Commissioner, Mister Buckland, everybody's working, because a lot of places does not make sense. So hopefully, it'll be on the ballot for, on the warrant for next meeting, town meeting. All right, so that being said, let's go to Richard. Richard, you have any comments before we close? Good. Good. Jake, you good?
Good.
Oh, that was Chris, Chris Conti, you good?
Yes, I'm all set, thank you.
He's good, okay. Uh, Counselor, anything before we close? No?
No, Mister Chairman.
All right, let's, can I get a motion to close?
So moved.
I have a motion to close by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second, Richard Temple.
Second by Richard, Richard, sorry, Chris, you can do on that. Chris?
I I second Chris Conti.
Second by Chris, all in favor, say aye, and say their name.
Aye, Jimmy.
Aye, Christopher Conti.
Aye, Veronica Devenes.
And I, Nazia Alcalasi.
Aye, Jacob Morrison.
Okay, now on the on the variance, what's the wishes? To grant the two hundred and sixty-eight square feet FAR variance.
With standard conditions, so moved.
So I have an aye by Jim, a motion to grant by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second, Jacob Morrison.
Second by Jake, all in favor, say aye.
Jimmy, aye. Jimmy, aye.
Christopher Conti, aye.
Nazia Akalasi, aye.
Veronica Devenese, aye.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Okay, very good, the carrots, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's done, aye, aye, aye. So we go to thirty-six dash twenty, continue public hearing, Stephen Webby, care of Jillian Morton Esquire, it's a variance on five Tyler Ave. Counselor is still open, that public hearing is open, so it's yours.
Thank you all, so I have some new plans that just came in. I don't think that Sonia had time to upload them, so I don't know, Ken, if I'm allowed to share or if I send it. But if you recall, this is the three family we're looking for over on Five Tyler Ave. And this is run in front of planning board as well, for the special permit to get the three family. Through the amount of time that we've had talks with the town about what they would want to see there. And we're still looking for the three family with one unit at least being affordable. So we have a three family with changed plans, because I know the parking was of issue to some of the members, so I can share that. And then in alternative, we've also understood that some of the members wanted to see a two-family of what that would look like. So again, I don't think we're here to get your full decision on everything, because I want to get these to you as well. But to get that feedback on what we're trying to do. And like I said, we are trying to do the three family with an affordable unit. And as you know, that's going through the process to get that approved through the state. So hoping to show you these now, can I, can I share my screen?
Yeah.
Your host, okay.
So, good, so you're gonna do a D driver and all? And who's gonna manage that, where am housing, South Shore, who's manager?
That's what we're looking into, and I know Mister Muzi is here as well, so he can hopefully help us through that process. But we've been in talks with different, the administrator, to see what they would want there. And we're, we understand the concerns, that three units is taxing on the town and trying to help the community out there. But in the alternative, you know, obviously, this property is under contract, so we're trying to close on it. And we have a proposal for a two-family too, which would still need variances because of the lot size, that we only have the nineteen thousand. And we need forty-five in that zone. So I don't know if it's something that you've done in the past to allow us to, to get a variance for the three family, if we're allowed to get the affordable unit. If we can't get that, then get the two-family. I know it's a lot to ask, but it's something that I wanted to see if that's an opportunity. But let me show you the plans and, and.
Yeah, you could show, but I, I gotta, I gotta say something. If you do an affordable and the state, the house, the housing authority, whatever you call that, up in the state, what do you call that, the housing?
It's like the DHCD.
Department of Housing and Community Development.
Yeah, the housing, yeah, so if they agree with you, you need to do an audit every year. And this audit will cost the owner a lot more than rent, I've done those, it's, 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 you need a certified accountant to do the audit and show that he doesn't make over twenty percent. So my, my concern is, because it's not a real forty B with companies managing and stuff, it's gonna go out of hand and nobody's gonna be able to watch it. So.
Well, I didn't know that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, 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 my personal opinion, I'm not, I'm, my opinion, I'm not willing to go for this. I know the town wants it, but they won't get my vote on it, but I'll see what the rest of the board says. This one was Mister Sample who sat on this, so we go to Richard.
I'll try to do the share.
Richard, while she's showing us, you want to give your opinion?
I have any opinions at this time?
Okay, Veronica?
Um, I think, I just want to clarify something with this, to start with. We're talking about the three family, but, which I'm, I'm not willing to approve. I wouldn't also be willing to approve a two-family on this. I think it's well under the requirement, and we just had an applicant come before us that was at eighty percent. He, he met all the requirements, eighty percent. But this applicant is way off of that, and he's looking to purchase, knowing full well what he's getting. And it's only a single-family dwelling by zoning could be built here. So I'm not willing to grant any variances.
Okay, very good, Jim?
I'm listening, I think I'm, I'd rather just listen to the wisdom of my other board members.
Uh, Jake?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Okay, uh, I guess you don't have Veronica, and you're not gonna have me as well. I, I want to take Chris's comments, even though he can't vote on it, but Chris, do you have a comment on this?
I, I, I agree with Veronica, and I agree with, with the chairman.
Yeah, I, now, if they want to proceed, a forty B applicant, I mean, it is what it is, they could proceed for this. But right now, the way I see it, it's, it's way be, below, it's existent non-conforming, they could do a single family. But you're not gonna get my vote, even with the recommendation of the town, to vote for us, two unit or three personally. And apparently, you don't have Veronica's, and Chris cannot vote. So but right there, the motion is gonna be lost, so I don't know what you want to do. If you want to get a vote, the denial, or you just want to drop it?
Um, I think.
Or you want to consult with your client?
Yeah, absolutely, I think I want to consult with the client and give us an opportunity to, I, the two-family is in that district allowed. We don't have the square footage, so that's where we would be coming in for, in front of you for, for the two-family. Now, again, this property is the unique property that had eight bedrooms, was a sober living house. So I don't think a two-family on that lot would be asking too much if it meets the other setbacks. And we just, is a lot sized, so I would ask that we have that opportunity to be able to pursue that route.
Okay, you have that big white house across, next to those trailers, right?
No.
No, Mister Chairman, it was that burned-down house?
Uh, the yellow house, the one you take a right, the first house on the right?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Take the right off the bypass, Naz, yes.
Yes, yes, okay, yeah, if you want to plead your case next time, talk to your client. But as, as, the way I see it, you get two definitely is a no, I don't know about the others. But so that, that, that would shut the project right down right there. Unless you want to come up with some difference that convince Veronica or myself, at least. Your deadline is, let me see here, Stephen, March twenty-six, you get, we get time?
Okay.
So you want to continue this?
Yes, I would ask for a continuance.
All right, so can I have a motion to continue till February ten? Second, motion by Jim, do I have a second?
Second, Veronica Devenese.
Second by Veronica, all in favor to continue thirty-six dash twenty till the February ten, two thousand twenty-one, say aye, state their name.
Jim Ekobachi, aye.
Veronica Devenese, aye.
Nazia Akalasi, aye. Okay.
We're gonna have to.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Medical or something, I don't know, age.
We should go back to town hall live, that's what we should do. All right, so we see you on the tenth.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ken, want to continue the rest of this agenda? What's the confirmation, let us on drive?
Just to let you know that the, the permit decision has been filed, it was filed today, meeting our fourteen-day requirement.
Okay, all right, very good.
You need all the members to go into the office to sign that, or what's going on with the signatures?
Signatures are done.
Oh, okay, good. All right, now we move to executive session. How, uh, thank you, Counselor, now, what's the rules on that? Are we, we shut everyone down? And can Attorney Morton ask if she could be on the executive session, can she?
I don't think there's a reason for her to be on there, I was just gonna give some rules of the road about how this is proceeding. I don't even know if we need to go into executive session to do this, since we're not talking strategy at all in the.
So what's your wishes, are we going or not?
Is this regarding the application in onset?
Yes.
That's right.
So, so let me, let me clear something, should we adjourn then open the executive session legally?
Yes.
All right.
Do the process.
Well, if we adjourn, can we do any other business? Because there is one other item that I would like in open meeting before we.
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
We have, we have, I, I believe, and Ken can correct me if I'm wrong, we've received the resignation of one of our full members, which creates the need to recruit another associate member and maybe move one of our associate members into a full membership seat. I know that that's an action of the Board of Selectmen, but they often ask for our input.
Okay. So, I, I know, Ken, so Jimmy, so you're saying we, we should, we have a request for our input from them?
I'd like to at least say to the selectmen, make a decision, pick somebody and go get us another one.
They, they have that information already, where they are gonna follow the, the standard procedure and open it up for people to nominate themselves for the position.
That's all I want, that's all I wanted to do, is make sure that it was on the record and that the process was in order, was in process.
Process is in process.
I think that's publicly, publicly has to be announced too. But anyway, I guess let the selectmen deal with that. That being said, let's adjourn and we go into executive session.
So moved.
I have a motion to close, to adjourn by Jim, do I have a second?
Second, Jacob Morrison.
All in favor, say aye to adjourn.
Aye, Jim Ekobachi.
Aye, Chris Conti.
Aye, Richard Temple.
Aye, Veronica Devenese.
Aye, Nazia Akalasi, so we adjourn, who's, Ken, you hosting?